Twenty-nine students who we're gonna publicly acknowledge their achievements in the MCAS scores. But before we do that, can we all rise and honor America by saluting our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fatakante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. This month's spotlight on excellence presentation on this evening will be to honor students who scored 280 in the MCAS exam in the spring of 2009. The event will feature current middle school students. We will also recognize students presently attending the freshman academy at Lowell High School who were tested in grade eight. Invitations were prepared and sent to the students and their parents and guardians. Each student will be presented with an engraved memento of this accomplishment, and I want to thank the principal, Mr. Robert Murphy of the Robinson School, who will provide a brief overview. Congratulate these students who present their awards. Put your hands together for these students as they come in.
(applause)
Okay, you have a good stack, so let's stay right here. Okay, you get right beside him. And then you gotta come in, get right beside him. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Nice job. The best is last, you better believe it.
Mayor Caulfield, Dr. Scott, members of the school committee, cabinet members. Each year, thousands of students statewide sit for the Massachusetts MCAS test in English, math, and science. The students assembled here this evening are in a select group of students statewide that have achieved a perfect score of 280 on one or more subjects tests given in the spring of 2009. This achievement is no small matter. The MCAS test has been independently rated as one of the most difficult state tests currently given in the United States. The students that appear here this evening for recognition have demonstrated a commitment to excellence in the academic arena. For some, it may be their first academic award, but we are all sure that it will not be their last. At this time, I present to you the students who are going to be recognized tonight. First, from the Butler School, Atilla Alvez. From the Stoklosa School, Jacob Andre. From the Wang School, Kayla Araco. From the Pine Arts School, Ashley Carbonneau. From the Pine Arts School, Anna De Cruz. From Lowell High School, sophomore Mary Mauler, sorry, Fowler, sorry. Mary attended St. Gendark. From Lowell High School, Michael Halligan. From the Robinson School, Austin Harvey. From the freshman academy, Odom Lim, Daily School. From the Robinson School, Ashley Lee. From the Sullivan School, Liam Manchinton. From the Stoklosa School, Jay Monja Lockley. From the Daily, from the Daily School, Giovanna Mason. From the Daily School, Megan McInesby. Okay, I'll get her. From the freshman academy and the Daily School, Brandon Lor. From the, from the Stoklosa School, Sahakriti Muth. From the Wang School, Eric Nguyen. From the Wang School, Kalen O'Fallon. From the Daily School, Callie O'Neill. From, from the Sullivan School, Harilben Patel. From Lowell High School and the Daily School, Caroline, Carolyn Rice. From the Wang School, Joshua Santana. From the Robinson School and last year, the Rogers School, Tyson Santos. From the Daily School, Tyler Sar. From the Daily School, Stephanie Sock, could not be with us tonight. From the Daily School, Greta Wilinski. And from the Sullivan School, Tracy Yang.
I talked to the students earlier in the hall, and we made a deal. We will applaud long and clear for them, but they had to return aboard with the teachers and the parents for more time with you to make sure this plan happened. Students, let's hear it.
Make a motion to take a five-minute recess for picture-taking.
Second of all, this is all very much. (inaudible).
Aye.
Five minutes recess.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can I get a picture? I have the list.
Okay, I'll send this to the school. It's free.
So we're gonna take a picture like that?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. White.
This is, um, one of my students.
So is the battery totally done?
I was hoping when I, she was so sweet.
So people are gonna take the picture, it's a mayor and superintendent.
I know.
Okay, good. Who's gonna be first for pictures? Find your mom and get her camera. Okay, somebody has to go in and start. Okay, oh, nice.
Isn't it true? I don't care, it's true. You look very nice, very nice, so, you always do.
Now, imagine, this is wonderful. Imagine getting 280, a perfect score.
Okay, Butler is only one. Stoklosa is one, two, three, four. Okay, Lowell High School, one, two, three, four.
Can you have your pictures taken by the school board? And they do the school board, that's essential. And you have your pictures taken by the superintendent.
Can you have your pictures taken by the school board? And they do the school board, that's essential. And you have your pictures taken by the superintendent.
Can you have your pictures taken by the school board? And they do the school board, that's essential. And you have your pictures taken by the superintendent.
I'm gonna give you a paper for me, guys. I'm gonna have to take a picture too.
There's the special meeting studio, okay?
Roll call after recess, you know.
Madam, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fatakante.
Yeah.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Seven present.
Before we move on with the agenda, I would just like to make one brief comment that what just transpired is what it's really truly all about. The students in the Lowell Public Schools and those students who are excelling. And thanks to the teachers and to those students who are here this evening. It was wonderful, and it truly makes me feel good. I know the committee and Dr. Scott and her staff feel good as well. Moving on with the agenda, under a special presentation, the growth model. Mr. Paul Schlickman will present that very important growth model to the viewing audience at home and to the committee. Mr. Schlickman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a PowerPoint, so that if anyone is in the room who can't see it, you may want to move to take a seat where you can see the screen.
Would you like some of the lights lowered, Mr. Schlickman?
Uh, as long, it's at the pleasure of the committee. If they can see, I can go either way.
The state has put together a really good slideshow on the growth model explaining it. So I'm gonna go through some of the slides from the state, and then I'm gonna bring in some of the data from Lowell. So it's a hybrid presentation in part, the state's explanation of the growth model, and in part, some explanation of how Lowell did in the model. And it's a very important thing for us. Consistently, when we've taken a look at MCAS scores every year, we've taken a look at where kids are at a snapshot in time. It hasn't told us how much a child has learned over the past year. And really, as a public school, our job is to teach children in the way we And really, as a public school, our job is to teach children in the way we can be best evaluated, is not on what they know at any one point, but how much they've learned over the year. Because you want to consider the starting point and the end point when you're making a discussion of how well a school is doing or how well children are doing. The MKS scores show how kids are meeting standards at any given point of time, but growth measures change if an individual student's performance. And this growth model is designed to tell you, how much did a child learn over the course of the year? How much did a child learn between the time they took the 5th grade MKS and the 6th grade MKS? And there are many good reasons to measure growth. As an urban district, we all know that when the MKS scores are published in the newspaper, we tend to be towards the bottom because we do have a district that is demographically different than most in the state. We have children who are coming in as immigrants in the middle of their educational career. We have the highest rate of second language learners in the state. These are things which will tend to make students take longer to reach proficiency. But the question is, how fast and how well are they making that trip? And a growth model provides evidence of students moving forward in their education. And so, the performance is achievement plus growth. So, we're taking what a child knew a year ago, plus the achievement, and that's going to be the growth model. And the state can use this, and as well as teachers and principals, can use this to identify strengths and weaknesses in student performance, targeting assistance, making evaluations of what you're doing, and eventually, the state would like to use this to make accountability decisions. Now, understand that the Federal No Child Left Behind Act was due to be reauthorized in nineteen, uh, 2007. So, they're a good two years late doing that. The state can't bring forth a new accountability system until the laws are changed and reauthorized. So, that the state does have an interest in bringing this into the evaluation process, but it won't happen until the federal government changes the regulations. Now, student growth is done by percentile. So, what essentially happens is they take kids who all have about the same MKS scores in the past two years. It's a two-year baseline except in 4th grade, where they only have the 3rd grade to work from. And so, they take all the kids in the state with about the same MKS scores, take a look at how they did in the most recent test, and just order them. And they come up with a percentile score of that group of kids. It's just making a new distribution and the kids who are highest have the highest growth. The kids who are lowest have the lowest growth. And there are three examples here I'm going to give you of growth. And the first one is Gina, who started off in 2007 with a 230 in the middle of Needs Improvement on the MKS. In 2008, in grade 6, she had a 230. So, the student had 230 and 230 in the previous two years. And so, let's take a look at how she did in 7th grade in 2009. The distribution for all the kids who were 230, 230s looks like this. And the top two green areas are the high growth, the bottom two wedges are the low growth, and the middle wedge is the moderate growth, is where we'd expect a child to normally fall after a year. And Gina had a 230. So, she went 230, 230, 230, but she was in that second wedge, it was a low-growth wedge, and she's 35% of the way up the distribution. She's in the 35th percentile, which means that she did better than 35% of the children who were also 230s, 230s. And that's how the model works. And the growth bands, the lowest one is for percentiles of 1 through 19. The second band, which is the low, is 20 to 39. The middle band is 40 to 59. The high growth is 60 to 79, and the very high growth is 80th percentile and up. So, that it's distributed in five equal blocks. Scores between 40 and 59 are typical. An SGP score is Student Growth Percentile. And you're going to be hearing a lot of SGP and talking a lot of SGP. It just means a Student Growth Percentile Score. Harry. Harry started off at a 248. Grade 6, he was also a 248. And in grade 7, the distribution of the 248s, 248s looked like this. Harry got a 244. Now, under normal circumstances, everyone would be celebrating this child because he was proficient three years in a row. And under the old accountability system, 100 points for being above proficiency, everything's good, everything's happy. But here, you have another issue coming up, is that 75% of the kids who fit his profile did better in 2009. He's only at the 25th percentile. Despite the fact he's proficient in all three years, he's also low-growth. Ivy. Ivy started off at 214 in 5th grade, had a 214 in 6th grade, and we'll take a look at 7th grade. This is the distribution for the 214, 214s. And Ivy got a 226. Now, 226 is a low-needs improvement. So, you're going to get hit on accountability for your AYP for a kid who's at 226, because they haven't reached proficiency. But she did better than 92% of the kids who had her academic profile in the past two years. She has a growth score of 92nd percentile, which is very high. This is a score to celebrate. Even though the child didn't reach proficiency that year, she showed a lot of growth in that year. And you can see how this distribution works. You take Ivy, the distribution that Ivy's in, the distribution that Gina's in, and the distribution that Harry's in, and they all calculate different SGP scores. Each has a different band of moderate growth or the norm, the normal expectation for a child of that academic profile. And the implications are clear. Harry, 230, 230, 230, had an SGP of 35. Or Gina had the 35, Harry had the 25, and Ivy had the 92. So, that in terms of demonstrating that a school has worked really hard and gotten a lot of growth, has moved a child, the one that you really have to celebrate because of the efforts of the school and the child working together, is Ivy. And this system recognizes Ivy rather than rewards Harry. Harry's SGP was a 25, and this is the interpretation. This means his growth score in grade 7 was higher than 25% of his academic peers and less than 75%. And if you can see the five bands, the first band of 20% is a very low growth, then there's the low growth between 20 and 39, the moderate growth in the middle, the high growth and the very high growth. And you can see how Harry's at 25, Gina's at 35, and Ivy's at 92. All these kids are put into one distribution, one number line for a growth score. And it's sort of easy to map this for children who were in 3rd grade last year, because they only have one baseline score. It makes it a little less stable, the 4th grade score. So, it's a little more difficult, it's got a little more error into it statistically. But if a child had a 23, which was the lowest Needs Improvement score on the grade 3 test in 2008, a 216 puts you at the 16th percentile. A 220, which is the lowest Needs Improvement score, 34th percentile. A 222, which isn't far away, is the 49th percentile. And all you had to do is get up to 232, which is a high Needs Improvement score, to get all the way up to the 81st percentile into high growth. So, making it into high growth is not an insurmountable barrier. In fact, by definition, 20% of the children statewide are high growth. Now, for kids who got a 36 in grade 3 in 2008, you needed to get a 230 to reach the 16th percentile, a 236 to reach the 34th percentile, a 240 to reach the 49th percentile, and a 248 to reach the 81st percentile. So, basically, you're seeing, the higher your score was in the previous years, the higher your score has to be to get into the high-growth category. And so, growth is different from achievement. Students are compared only to their academic peers. Growth is subject, both math and English Language Arts, grade and year-specific, and the percentiles are calculated based on the change in achievement compared to others. So, it's based, not on a criteria of achievement, it's based on your distribution of results. And the state of Massachusetts adopted most of this model from Colorado, which has been using it fairly successfully for a few years. Now, showing growth for groups like a school or a school system adds a couple of other factors. And so, as public policy people, you're interested in knowing, well, it's nice to know what a kid did, but how are our schools doing? How are we doing in particular grades? And there are two ways to describe this. One is called the Median Student Growth Percentile. And what you do is find the middle kid, find what percentile that child is at, and that's the median percentile. So, if you have 41 kids, the 20th kid in line is your middle kid. And you have the growth distribution charts, which shows you how many kids were in the low, middle, and high groupings. And I'll show you examples of both. Here are the two ways to summarize the group data. And if you look at our data for Lowell, for English Language Arts, and now we're getting into our own data. For English Language Arts, system-wide, this is from grades 4 through 10. We had 21% of the children in very low, 21% in low, 20% in moderate, 20% in high, and 18% in very high. That's very, very, very close to the state norm of 20, 20, 20, 20, 20. We're just sort of a sneeze below. And if you take a look at the growth percentile of 49, it's saying our middle kid of all the kids in Lowell is at the 49th percentile. Shows that we're right about at the state average, just a sneeze below. That's a good score. Math, on the other hand, only 18% were very low, 18% were low, 20% were moderate, 20% were high, and 24% were very high. We exceeded the state average. And this actually is exceeding the state average by quite a bit. Our student growth percentile, the median student growth percentile is the 55th percentile, which means our middle kid, which you'd expect to be at 50, is at 55. And for a large group, that's a very substantive move off the center. The state is looking to use median student growth percentiles on one axis and proficiency levels on the other to look at schools. And in the middle, you see that middle group between 40 and 60, which are schools that are making moderate progress. And you can see it works into four quadrants. Down the lower left-hand corner are lower achieving, lower growing schools. Their scores aren't very good, and the kids aren't making gains. Upper left-hand corner are higher achieving, low growth. These are schools where kids are doing very well on the test, but they're not gaining much from year to year. Lower right-hand corner are lower achieving and high growing. So, you've got kids who are starting off low, but they're moving. And the upper right-hand corner are the high achieving, high-growth schools. Now, we can take a look at our own data. And for the state, as you remember, each category is 20, 20, 20, 20, 20. Our district had 21% in the two lowest categories, so we were slightly off. And we ranked the grades based on the percentage of students in the very high-growth category. Grades 8 and 6 exceeded the state averages with 26 and 23%. Grades 5, 10, 7, and 4 were below the state average, which is why, when we've got it all done, we were just a sneeze under the state average. For mathematics, our grade 6 did extraordinarily well. I mean extraordinarily well. We were one of the highest performing districts in the state at grade 6. 34% of our children in grade 6 had very high growth. Only 13% were in the low growth, very low category. What this means is when we'd expect to have 20% of our kids in that top category, we had 34. And that's pretty amazing. And in fact, in all of our grades, we had more than 20% of our kids in the very high category. And we've ranked them again in order of relative performance. Grades 6, 10, 8, and 7 are at the top. Our middle schools, overall, have been particularly strong on this model, particularly in mathematics. And this is grade 6, and this is an example of how we can take a look at schools. And the Stoklosa's in 4th place here on grade 5 and on grade 8, the Stoklosa was at the top. Different schools are at the top for different grades. So, don't read a lot into each school's position just on this one display. But you can see that you've got the Sullivan, Stoklosa, Daly, Wang, and Pine are just really doing very well, very, very well on 6th grade math. And I want to break it down to show you how we can look at individual subgroups. And this is from the Stoklosa School. If you take a look at all students at the Stoklosa School, 46% of the 6th graders tested showed high growth. In Lowell, it was 34%, in the other schools, in the state, it was 20. This is an amazing number. For regular ed students at the Stoklosa, 47% of the regular ed students were in that top group, very high growth. And 51% of our English Language learners at the Stoklosa School were very high growth. Now, under the normal way we've evaluated schools and looked at AYP, the Stoklosa hasn't come out as a top school because of the starting point of many of the students. But what this data shows is that students who go to the Stoklosa grow. And this is a distribution of the Stoklosa students. The vertical axis is their scaled score, so you can see there's still a bunch of kids with low scores. But the horizontal is the growth score. And you can see, remember, that 44% of the students at the Stoklosa, overall, are at or above the 80th percentile. So, that when you take a look down the lower right-hand corner, you have a child with a score of 218, which two-eighteen, which is at the top of the warning scale, but has a growth score of ninety-second percentile. That kid moved. You also have, in the upper-right-hand corner, two kids who scored two-eighty, who are probably in the room tonight. And they had very-high growth scores. But if you take a look at that distribution of how those dots are all sort of leaning over the right-hand side, there's a lot of kids in the sixth grade last year at the Stoklosa that made a tremendous amount of progress. And you take a look at the four grades. For regular-ed kids and English Language learners, all four grades, they did well. Grade seven, they were right around the state average. The other three grades, they were blowing the doors off of this thing. And you can see the power of a growth model now, because this is something, this is a story I couldn't tell last year, but I can tell it now because we have this data and this calculation. And it also changes the rank orders of things a little bit. If we take a look at the nine largest urban districts in the state, we're third in English Language Arts with our forty-ninth percentile. But among our neighbors, the ones we're always compared to, contiguous communities, we're in third place. Chelmsford and Billrica are ahead of us, but we beat Tingsborough, Tewksbury, the Innovation Academy Charter School, Drake, and the Lowell Community Charter. Math. We are not just the nine largest urban districts, but all urban districts, two dozen urban districts, we are at the top. We are the highest-performing urban district in math growth. But what about our neighbors? We beat Billrica, we beat Tingsborough, we beat Chelmsford, we beat the Innovation Academy Charter, we beat Tewksbury, we beat Drake, and we beat Lowell Community Charter. We're tops among our neighbors in growth, in math. And that's the story of growth model. And I hope that I was able to go and give you an idea of how this works and why this is important for Lowell. And feel free to be in contact with me at any time if you wanted to know more about the growth model and how we're doing.
Are there any members of the committee that have questions for Mrs. Schlickman? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to say I was very impressed with that presentation. The score results are incredible, it's very exciting. And I would ask through you, to the superintendent, if this presentation is available on our website, or if we could make it available to our community. I think it was an excellent way to explain. As usual with education, it's never a simple thing. Now, we have a new acronym, what is it? Growth, SGP, to add with AYP, and NCLB, and all the other ones. But I would love to see access to that presentation on our website. I don't know if that's available yet, but that would be my question. Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I did have one quick question and then a comment. Dr. Schlickman, could you tell me, so as we're looking at the Stoklosa, which I know you had referenced several times, and those very-high-achieving, high-growth students, I know the comparison is done to like scores. Is that like scores within that school community, or are all the like scores always statewide?
The calculation is statewide, so the state has a very-large pool of kids within any given category, so it has a nice distribution to work off of. That's what makes it statistically robust and a really good fit for what's really happening.
And that was exactly the thought behind my question, making sure that that was where our comparisons were being made to. You know, I agree, I think that this is really powerful information for our district and all districts across the Commonwealth to have. And I think that what it does is gives us, you know, another barometer that allows us to make some, I hope, good decisions as we move forward. I do want to ensure too, though, I think that the real strength of this is that it informs the data that we've already been receiving. I think the real power in this comes from being able to use actual achievement and being able to integrate growth, understanding of growth into that, into the actual achievement, the performance data. And I think as you look at our traditional MCAS scores, that was always one of the great failings, it could tell you, with a certain degree of certainty, what performance, what the achievement was of an individual student, but you couldn't see the kind of dynamic nature of what they were, of the process they were making, or you hoped the progress they were making. I just want to make sure that we all, you know, make sure that these two items need to inform each other. No one of these models is going to give us all the answers, and I think its greatest strength really comes from our ability to be able to look at both and be able to make our decisions based on that. Because all the growth in the world doesn't mean anything if, at the end of the day, a child is still scoring at needs improvement or in the warning category. And as I think, you know, as you described very clearly, you can certainly see how there would be instances where you have a student who is in the ninety-fifth percentile because they made growth, but it could also, just in actuality, be, you know, a smaller number of actual points of increase when it comes to the traditional MCAS understanding. But I think it's great information. I think we need to be coming back to this over and over again. I know as we get this information, it's going to be important that we continue to interpret it and make sure that we're using it, I think, very effectively. So I thank the, I thank our presenter, I also thank the administration as a whole for presenting this to the full committee. I know I found it very informative, and I hope for people who are tuning in and following this, that they can have a better understanding of exactly what this is as we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Schlickman. When is the state going to start using this information as far as like AYP is concerned? Because, I mean, with the threat of the state coming in to take over our schools and charter schools, you know, I guess proclaiming that charter schools are the end-all, be-all, I mean, we've outperformed them. So this is good information for us, but how does this help us in our standing with the state? I mean, if they're going to come in and say that Lowell, you know, really isn't performing as well, or we need more charter schools, how do we get this information out?
The one challenge we have is that the accountability system that the state uses has to be approved by the federal government under the No Child Left Behind Act. So the state cannot do a formal change of the AYP accountability system until the No Child Left Behind is reauthorized. And if you call your members of Congress and tell them that you want this to be a key component of the evaluation system when the bill is reauthorized, that would probably be a good thing. But the state also does have this data available to it, and I'm sure it's going to inform them as they're looking at schools that they consider schools that need intervention versus schools that are doing well. There are two, you know, the problem with the current AYP system is that it's like pouring water into a glass box, and by 2014, given the trajectory, the requirements, every school is going to be underwater. It's just that some of us are taller than others, and some will drown first. So that has to be fixed, it has to be changed. Right now, there are far too many schools in AYP trouble for the state to go after all of them. And so that if the state is going to go and use its resources wisely and make interventions where they're needed, they're going to take a look at both the traditional AYP and the growth scores. And you can see from that slide that they were looking for the low-performing and low-growth schools.
I mean, we can see how well we're performing as a district, so.
Yeah, I think we have a lot to be proud of.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
I'd just like to add to your response. With regards to the growth data and the traditional MCAS, as Ms. Martin said, it really is important for us to be cognizant of the fact that even when children have good growth data, they may still not be a proficient even. And our goal is obviously to have all our students at proficiency. So the two combined are a very powerful measure of student achievement. The state is quite clearly embracing the growth model, along with the traditional proficient, needs-improvement, advanced categories. That whole scale is still in play, and it is my understanding that they are going to be looking at both accountability systems to determine level-four schools, to determine what schools need to basically be restructured, turned around, et cetera. The reason why we don't have a full report on that tonight is because that's still a moving target. We're not exactly sure what's that, what is that, you know, that whole process going to look like. And ultimately, there's legislation that will also impact what actually these turnaround schools will look like and how they're governed.
Anyone else? Mr. Schlickman? If you were a contestant dancing with the stars, you would get a ten. But an excellent presentation. I know many hours went into this, and this is more or less a yardstick for the entire school district to look at, but we never had this before. And it was exciting watching your presentation and to watch how the Lowell schools matched up against other school districts. And this is going to be extremely valuable, and you did an excellent, excellent job, not only putting this together, but presenting it as well. And my two years here as the mayor, this is the most exciting thing that has come before, I think, the committee, because now it is a yardstick, a growth yardstick, where we can measure the students and the particular schools that they're attending. Is there any other? Madam Superintendent?
I would just like to thank our staff, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administration, and the district-level personnel. I know Clara Abrams has done a lot of work with regards to alignment of math, as we just discussed in our curriculum subcommittee, as well as the work that's being done in English Language Arts across the system. We have dedicated, committed staff, and we have a lot to be proud of in Lowell Public Schools this evening. Thank you.
Are there any people in the audience who would like to offer some comments? Feel free to do so. If none, thank, Mr. Schlickman, thank you. How many hours did you put into this, Mr. Schlickman?
I've lost count, but, you know, I've given the presentation a couple of times, and every time I do it, you know, it's even more exciting, and I find other ways to improve it, to make it more clear for people.
We all applaud you for your hard work. Thank you. We have on the agenda the evaluation of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Chris Augusta Scott. And everyone has the evaluation before you, and I would, the chair would recognize Connie Martin, the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee. Connie?
Certainly, just a couple of quick things. I know, and I guess this is in deference to you, Mr. Mayor, you had initially your motion in the minutes that stated you wanted to conduct this after the meeting. Is that no longer the case? You'd like to do it now?
It's whatever.
It's whatever.
Whatever the committee would like. It's.
Okay. It's fine. I just wanted to make sure, so when we do the minutes, we should probably change, just so everything's in, says the same thing, which would be nice. I would just say, you know, traditionally, what we've done is kind of start at the beginning with Mr. Conway and giving everyone an opportunity to share their impressions and their insights and suggestions moving forward, so nothing more complicated than that.
No, no. Is there anyone else who would like to? Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is certainly a very important duty for each school committee person to evaluate the superintendent. I think that I have a unique perspective on this situation, being involved with the school system for so many years and serving under eight superintendents. And during that time, I certainly have seen, should we say, the good and the bad. And I would like to say that when Dr. Chris Augusta Scott was elected as superintendent of Lowell Public Schools, the one thing that really stood out was the fact that she said that she wanted to move to Lowell. Now, for some people, that might not necessarily be an important factor, but it certainly, as far as I'm concerned, showed some dedication, not just to the school department, but also to the city of Lowell. And for that, I congratulate Dr. Scott. And I also want to say that, as far as I'm concerned, I would think that she would be considered a role model as far as high-profile positions in the city are concerned. And it would be wonderful if many other people followed suit. As far as, two years ago, Mr. Mayor, I saw certainly firsthand that morale in the school department was not that good. And many people thought that morale was good, but I think the people that actually were in the schools, doing the job on a daily basis, knew that there were some issues. And I happen to think that morale is something that's extremely important, whether it's in education, whether it's in the business community, or any other profession. Because when an individual goes to work, I think that they want to feel that they are valued and their ideas are respected. And I think for a number of years, that did not happen. With Dr. Scott on board, I can honestly say that when I talk to the teachers in particular and other staff members, that has changed. And for that, I congratulate Dr. Scott. Because as far as I'm concerned, that's something that translates into so many positive things. And the ultimate end is success in the classroom and success for each and every student. So once again, I congratulate you for that, Dr. Scott. I also want to say that last year, I had the privilege, as other school committee people did, to go around to the schools with the superintendent, when the superintendent had open-house meetings with each and every school, and it was on a volunteer basis. And that's not an easy thing to do, because the superintendent at that particular time, I'm sure, did not know what she was going to be faced with. And yet, going from school to school, she listened to each and every individual. She listened to what they had to say. I observed this, I thought it was very unique. It certainly did not happen with many superintendents. One happened to be Mr. Sappasaris and his administration, which I think that probably contributed to the fact that his administration, in his tenure as superintendent of schools, was as successful as it was. I found that the teachers were confused, in a positive way, to think that a superintendent wanted to hear their ideas and their opinions. And I think it's so very simple, because these are the individuals that deal with situations every single day. They deal with the students. She sought their advice, and I think that that certainly has translated into positive things, for example, what we just saw tonight, contributing to the test scores. So again, I congratulate the superintendent as far as that was concerned. The beginning of this year, there was a unique opportunity. The superintendent and her staff put together an incredible program at the auditorium, not just inviting the teachers, which in the past, that's what did happen. She invited all members of the school department, guidance counselors, principals. She invited all members of the school department, guidance counselors, principals, teachers, parists, secretaries, and the rest. And as far as I'm concerned, that showed me, and it showed other people in the school department, that this was a team, and that everyone had to work together, so that everyone be on the same page, to try to educate these 14,000 students that we have in the city of Lowell. The results of that meeting were incredible. I had a number of people say to me, "That was great to stand side by side with all the different employees in the school department." And once again, I congratulate the superintendent. The other thing that, as far as I'm concerned, which I think is extremely important, I have said it time and time again, there are perhaps people that are sick and tired of hearing me say it, but I'm going to certainly continue for the next two years, and that is talking about partnerships, how important they are. And I have seen the superintendent reach out. You know, there's one thing about saying certain things, but there's another thing of actually doing it. And I have seen the superintendent reach out to the business community, and there's an area that I think has, has not been given enough attention by the school department. And that is changing, and I'm glad to see that. Because especially during these economic times, Mr. Mayor, I think that we certainly need their wisdom and their ideas and their thoughts going forward. The superintendent has also reached out, and her staff, to UMass, Middlesex Community College, and also is trying to maximize the nonprofits, their resources, which I think is an extremely positive thing. Another area that happens to be dear to my heart is the art community. Once again, an area that has been neglected. We have so many artists here in the community, and we are now tapping into that resource so that the artists can have input in our school system and help our children, which I think is a, is a great idea. So, I think that, to sum this up, Mr. Mayor, the, one of the things that really does amaze me at this particular point with the superintendent, is the fact that, coming from a small area, a small school system, and I had my doubts, I'll be the first one to admit that, she came forward to a very complex system, and was able to navigate through this system in a very positive way. And I think if you go out into the community, you'll certainly see that she is well-respected. And I think that I've enjoyed working with the superintendent, and I, and I certainly look forward to continue to work with her. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer any comments? Oh, Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will try to be brief and not duplicate too much of what's already been said. I have to say, from the very beginning, I've been impressed with Dr. Scott's commitment to the community, and high energy and enthusiasm about the work involved. And for someone who, as was mentioned, just jumped into a very complex school system, I thought she, I think she's had a great first year. We had 75 items to individually evaluate Dr. Scott on with three choices, exceeds, meets, or does not meet. Of those 75 items, the superintendent got eight exceeds expectations from me, and no does not meet, that in each category, I thought she met expectations or exceeded. And I think some of the areas where I found her above expectations, I think, would be consistent with, with my colleague to the right, as already mentioned, that would be community relationships, really being part of the community, being involved, and really the fiber of Lowell. And what, and that's more than just a nine-to-five job, obviously. It's weekends, it's evening, evenings, it's moving and living here and being part of the community. Another area that I gave exceeds expectations was around staff morale, which was already mentioned, which I won't go into. I think Mr. Conway did an excellent job of covering that, except to point out, one thing that struck me in particular, were the collaboration efforts with our teachers' union in particular. I attended a Saturday event, which was all volunteer, to see a number of our teachers, a number of our principals, working together, talking about how we communicate. And then there was a follow-up event where the union led, we had American Federation Teachers, trainers, professional development people come in and work with our people. And again, we saw that cross articulation, I don't know what the word is, but, you know, we had people from different levels within the school department, meeting together on a Saturday, talking about how they could work together more effectively. That really impressed me. That energy was exciting. It's exciting to be part of this committee with the superintendent's enthusiasm and leadership going forward. And I do, as was said earlier, I agree, this is one of the important parts of our job, is this evaluation. So, there was, I would like to offer some constructive suggestion, and in particular, the one that comes most to my mind tonight is regarding the budget. Now, I gave the superintendent an evaluation of meets expectation regarding the budget. I think she showed great leadership and boldness in, you know, proposing that we, we close the Rogers School and move there. It was a significant savings in rent, and not taking it off the, the quality of education we're offering our children. There was some cramming of classrooms. I'm not going to say the closing of the Rogers was not without some drawbacks, but I think it was a bold decision. My concern with the budget was more in terms of the process and the timing of how it was handled. Back in December of 2008, my colleagues may or may not recall, I had a motion asking for two budget scenarios. What does it look like if we're level-funded? What does it look like if we're cut 10%? If we see the kind of devastating cuts we did? We ended up having to cut $8 million. And every other week, it was a different number coming from the state. But back in December, a year ago, I had a motion on this floor, where we discussed, and I know some people, some of my colleagues had concerns about that might unnecessarily alarm people, but I was thinking, and I think the city was facing the same thing with city, with the city manager, giving you a couple of scenarios to be thinking, preparing for what if we have to cut $10 million? What is that going to look like? And I would have liked if we could have gotten some of that earlier, because we didn't see, I had that motion, it did pass by a majority, I don't remember the vote, but we never saw that worst-case scenario until we were in the thick of it. And it was literally, every week, there was a different number coming down from the state, and it was looking bleaker and bleaker. And although, like I started to say when I talked about the budget, I think she handled it very well, her leadership, the leadership of the assistant superintendents who were involved in that was very effective. It was kind of by the seat of our pants, more than I would have been comfortable with. And I think that we had a community partnership and finance subcommittee meeting a couple weeks ago, where we talked about how we're going to do things going forward, and everybody seemed to be on the same page, that we want to do more of that pre-planning, that we really, if we are going to be making these kinds of devastating cuts, we need to have more notice so that when we go into it, we've had some more time to think about what the implications would be. So, that would be my suggestion going forward, and I think we already seem to have, looking at our, our next budget cycle, that we're going to be doing a lot more of that early on. But overall, as I said, of 75 items, they were most were meets expectations, and eight was exceeds expectations. I think we're fortunate to have Dr. Scott leading the public schools, and I'm very excited about her continued leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the committee all agrees that one of the most important things that we do is evaluate the superintendent. It is an arduous process. It is a process that is, Ms. Martin is agreeing with me over there, it's an arduous process, but it is a process that makes us be very introspective about what is happening in our school system. And it forces us to look at where we're coming from and where we're going to. With that being said, the superintendent has my evaluation, and I think that the evaluation speaks for itself. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. As my colleagues had said, I try to be brief and not go over, not try to repeat everything that they had said, but basically, sure, what, what you did, Madam Superintendent, coming here, you opened a lot of doors and started a lot of dialogue that, that was missing. Came in, started working with the unions, brought the teachers into the discussion, which, you know, they really value that, obviously. They, they want to be part of the solution, they want to be involved. I think, as Mr. Conway said, that was so important, and just, that was the biggest thing you could have done when you first got here, and I'm glad you picked up on that. A few things I did want to go over, as far as constructive criticism is, in my, in my evaluation, the answers are, basically, everything was satisfactory, I really don't have any big issues that are disappointing to me. The only thing I, I do want to suggest is, and I, I guess I've talked about this before, is I need a little more information sometimes, so I would just like to have more information in our emails, or maybe our packets. Because there are some things that have come up that have bothered me, like the, one of my questions to all the superintendents when they first got here for their interviews, was the, the importance of replacing the headmaster when that time came up. And over the last few months, we've tried to discuss that, and we really haven't talked to it, because, talked about the situation, because official papers haven't been turned in. But I am concerned that, you know, we had a timeline, we had a definite plan, yet a decision hasn't come from the high school. So, I mean, I don't, I would assume we've posted that position, because that, that's what I've been told. So, I just need, from you and from your office, just to be a little more clearer, a little more direct with me, and just to say, you know, if we're going to stick with this timeline, we, we missed the, we're not going to be able to stick, stick by the standard because of A, B, and C. But I really, the high school is so important to me and to others, that I really wanted to see what was going to happen there. And I just think that in the future, big issues like this, I think we really need to be included, a little bit more closely in the discussion. And the other thing I just want to bring up, I, I thought at the budget last year, I thought that we, you know, it was a difficult time. I thought we all did a good job. And again, I was disappointed in myself, but as I had discussed with you, I, I just thought that we didn't really have enough leadership from both sides, from, from your office and from, from us as a committee. I felt that, I really wanted, I wanted the real numbers, I guess. When we, for example, when we talked about the Rogers School, that was a great idea, it was out-of-the-box thinking. But what bothered me afterwards is, I didn't think I really got the right information on how it was going to affect the classroom. I thought I was told that classroom size would stay the same. And then after we voted on it, we found out that the numbers are going up. So, I kind of felt like I should have been, I should have been able, I should have been told the real numbers. And if they weren't available at that time, then that's fine, but see, I don't know. So, I'm not sure if we had real numbers, and, and the committee wasn't really exactly, you know, I, I guess I felt like we couldn't handle the truth at that time. So, this is a good idea, and it was. Are we, you know, let's ease, ease them into the proposal. So, I just, to go forward, I would just ask that, that we have real, concrete information so that we can make our, our decisions and feel comfortable with them. But overall, you know, you're doing an excellent job. The biggest piece, again, is reaching out to the community, making the teachers feel empowered. And as you go forward, you come up with a lot of good ideas, a lot of out-of-the-box thinking, which is good, and we need that. So, I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years again, and I appreciate that, that you took on this challenge and you came here to Lowell. Thank you.
Mr. Louis?
Thank you, Mayor. The first year here, I think, I was one of the folks that, that, that was enthusiastically bringing you into the Lowell Public Schools, and the major reason was because I thought your management style and your management philosophy was, was a good one, and that would be a good fit at the right point in time for the Lowell Public Schools. And I think one of the, during the first year, I guess, the way I looked at the evaluation the first year, it's essentially a year where you take the time to get to know the Lowell Public School system, which is an enormous system, with over 23 buildings, you know, 14,000 students rounded, and over 1,000 employees easily, for a variety of different departments, not to mention all the state mandates. It takes an inordinate amount of time, perhaps a full year, to really begin to diagnose what the right plans were, or would be, for the school system. And I felt when you came into the system, you did the right steps by sitting down and actually listening to people, as opposed to coming in and just have, sharing what your, maybe your initial gut philosophy would be about education. And I felt that was a huge, positive thing for the system. And I felt at the, at that point in time, it was the right thing to do, and I still believe that, and I, and I commend you for taking the time to sit down and go through those schools, listening to our people, and really trying to understand where their problems were, before you started to make decisions and started to make changes. I think that's significant, and I think that's, sometimes folks look at that as, yeah, whatever, you're just going out into buildings, having field trips, but the, but the result of that, when you begin to really get into the work this year, will be beneficial not only to the staff, but to you, and to the city as a whole. I think this first year was a baseline. And I said, and if you looked at my evaluation for the public, my base, my baseline was, you met expectations. Unfortunately, but being a CEO, your challenge this year is much more significant. Now, you're going to be competing against your baseline, and it's now, it's, I guess the way to look at it is, as you have to look at it for your people, is the bottom line's the bottom line. And we need to now move forward and have results. And I think you be positioned yourself in a, in a way that you, you hopefully will maximize that, and that's good. So, I'm, I'm very happy with what I've seen so far in terms of what small steps that we've made. And again, the system is significantly large, making small steps before you make major decisions is important. I think the challenges we had this year with the budget were, were almost unprecedented. And I, well, actually, they are unprecedented, because back in the early '90s and other years, we did not have a state measurement system like MCAS. You can make cuts in areas just to make them, just to get down to the bottom-line number. Now, we're challenged by not only the MCAS results, but the State of Educ, the Board of Education that comes in and says, "You can't just simply wipe out, you know, all the principles of a school system, or all these, this, this, this particular special ed program, because you are held accountable beyond just the local district." And I felt going through this process was, was frustrating. I felt that it wasn't anyone's particular fault in the Lowell system. I felt that we worked very hard at it, but I felt this time around, going forward, we need to begin now. And I think we began the process of looking at how our organization works. And I feel that we're going to be going through additional changes coming up in January and February, that a lot of decisions that the committee and the, and the administration really aren't going to want to recommend, but are going to have to. And some of those major restructurings are, like the HR, the Human Resources Department, et cetera. These are major challenges that we have to, have to make to save costs, but at the same time as saving costs, we have to ensure that we're excelling. I guess the bottom line's the bottom line. So, the first year was, it was a pretty good start. Unfortunately, this year coming in right now, that we're almost in the, beginning in January, the middle of, are really going to be the proofs of the pudding. And it's going to have to be based on results. So, I'm encouraged. I think folks have pointed out constructive criticism in some forms of communication. I think that's something that it takes time for us to get to work together and know each other's personalities. And unfortunately for, for you, you have seven different personalities to, to learn and acclimate yourself to. But I think that's, that's now, we have the first year out of the way, and that's something that we're going to, we'll be expecting, you know, better, better performance in. But I think overall, you have a great start, you have major challenges ahead, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Ms. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I actually, um, my colleagues have all been able to speak so well right off the cuff. I am actually gonna be referring to my actual documents for, uh, as I go through this. Um, I think, uh, certainly the, the comments that have been made up till this point are, are, um, accurate, and I think that there are some specific points that I do think we should be able to discuss. And I will say that one of the failings, I think, of our document here is that we were limited in our options. Um, so, I found, as I was going through this process, that the things I really wanted to be able to focus on, um, were the areas that, you know, as I looked at it, things that as we move forward, we need to be able to have professional, um, conversations about. I think our expectations collectively as a committee, and more importantly, as a city as a whole, are extremely high for our public schools, and certainly for our superintendent and the team she's put together. Uh, so, I think that we have to be able to, uh, point at the things where we think we can see improvement, and offer insights where we can as to how things can be constantly and continuously improved. Uh, I can remember from my first, uh, campaign, talking about the whole concept that, you know, there's no such thing as good enough in education. Uh, there's no such thing as reaching a point and saying, "There you go, we're educated." Uh, it is a constant and, and consistent process that needs to, uh, always be, I think, at the forefront for all of us. Again, referring, as I've gone through this, uh, the instrument and the document that we've been working with, um, starting with relationships with the school committee, I would say that I have had, uh, over the course of time, some concerns about, uh, the, the frequency of conversation. Uh, I think that there have been times when, uh, whether it's been, uh, you know, in terms of a constructive criticism, or an idea moving forward, or things like that, that I have found personally that, uh, there hasn't been enough conversation, uh, around these things. Sometimes I have found that when, uh, ideas are brought up, that, um, that it's, uh, because of the, I'm sure, the budgetary constraints and a lot of other pressures that are, uh, stressing our system, it's been difficult to see a lot of forward movement in things. Um, so, I think that moving forward, and again, that's certainly what an evaluation is all about, I would encourage the superintendent to feel free to, um, increase communication with our committee, to share with us information about, um, whether it's, you know, challenges she's facing as an individual, or that she sees for the, the district as a whole. I think this committee, uh, has a great deal to offer, and would welcome the opportunity to be more involved in, uh, some of the, the decisions that have been made. Uh, the second area of responsibility, as I go through the instrument, is the community relationships. Uh, I think that, you know, as, as I look at my score, it was, you had exceeded expectations on every measure, uh, in that area, which I certainly am impressed with and have seen the, the value of across our district. Um, I've also, as you move down to the next area, the staff and personnel relationships, you know, the, the, one of the other areas where I really saw exceptional performance was in terms of your encouragement of your staff, uh, and working to include them in planning procedures, uh, and in the policy development. I think that bringing together not just the central office, but stretching out beyond that has been of great value, I think, to you certainly, as you, you found your footing here in Lowell, uh, and has benefited the district as a whole. Uh, I know that several of my colleagues have discussed the, um, budget process that we went through this year. Um, it, this was, again, an area where I see some opportunities for improvement. I think that we recognized, having lived through this process, that having the information that was requested, uh, early in the year would have, wouldn't have made the process any less painful, uh, but I think would have allowed us, uh, more time and consideration so that our decision-making wasn't made, uh, in a, in a rushed manner. I certainly, as we went through this process, was uncomfortable with, uh, the, somewhat of the, the lack of direction in terms of actual recommendations being made to this committee. Uh, I felt that, that kind of structure that we, um, kind of anticipated, that the administration's role generally has been to make recommendations, uh, for this committee to then consider, uh, and then make a decision on. Uh, I think by the conclusion of our process, we certainly had reached that point. Um, but it, it took us quite a while to get there, and I, and I think that frustrated the process and took what was a horrible situation and, uh, didn't help it. Uh, so, I think moving forward, again, things to consider in the future would be, uh, how we can take that budget process, how we can, um, accommodate the requests, the motions made by this committee for information early, and then how we can structure the actual hearings so that they can move in a, in a more, uh, smooth and professional manner. Um, I think that, uh, one of the other areas that I had looked at in terms of the, um, you know, with, uh, personal qualities and superintendent's image, you know, had all met or really exceeded expectations. Um, and then the only other area, and I know that we had discussed this, Dr. Scott, the, and I think part of this is being new in a new community, that there were some situations, I think, that, that collectively, the administration and the, um, the committee found themselves in over the course of this first year, where, uh, reactions had not been, uh, there wasn't anticipating what responses were going to be to certain policy decisions, to certain, uh, conversations. I, I don't think that we had, uh, kind of the right, uh, understanding of, of how people, both inside our district and in the community at large, would respond to some of the actions that were taken fairly quickly. Um, and that, uh, you know, the, by not being able to anticipate that better, it did make sometimes the, uh, the process certainly, in many cases, longer and, and more involved. I know certainly, as we had our conversation today in the curriculum subcommittee, talking about the sex education, that was a situation where I think we made a lot of movement really fast, and then really hit a brick wall because of, uh, our inability to anticipate what the responses were going to be from the community. Um, so, I put that forth as a, as an example. Uh, I think moving forward, I, again, the, the key points I would say is that I would welcome the opportunity to, uh, get the information that I think, um, in terms of the reporting that this committee has, uh, seen in, in the past. Uh, we look at the report tonight on the growth model, substantive, uh, very important, presented appropriately. Um, I think that's the kind of information that I'd like to see at our, at our meetings. Um, and I think that, you know, I, in the past, certainly, we've seen more of that, and I know in an attempt to streamline, some things have been pushed to the, the subcommittees, but I do think that we, uh, we can do a disservice sometimes if we don't do those important conversations here at the, at the committee level, the full committee meetings. Um, and then again, just looking towards the future in terms of hoping that our budget process, we can all learn from it, to be, uh, better informed and, uh, better prepared as we go through it. Um, and the idea of being able to incorporate constructive criticism and ideas into, uh, decision-making is something that I, I'd like to see, um, you know, to a greater extent as we move forward. As I went through, and I looked at the numbers, and I kind of, uh, reviewed the overall performance of these, as I know Ms. Doherty had referenced, 75 different areas, uh, I had a 91% score for the superintendent of either met or exceeded. I think in the first year, uh, that's, uh, an impressive showing to have reached, uh, a 91% level. And, uh, as I look forward, you know, I, I think we have laid some really important foundations, uh, for us, but I think the work ahead for, uh, for the superintendent, for her staff, for us in this room, and for, most importantly, the, the teaching staff, the entire support staff, our students and our families, uh, these are extremely challenging times, and we all need to be open to new ideas, to new innovations, and I think we all need to be prepared to do the hard work. So, I think that's something that we all share as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, I would like to offer some comments, and the leadership that Dr. Scott has shown and possesses. In the early on, when we were interviewing candidates, Anne Murphy and I, uh, took Dr. Scott out to the Riley School, and on our way there, I posed this question to Dr. Scott. I said, "Doctor, if you receive this position, you are selected as the superintendent, where are you gonna make your home?" And she looked at me, "Mr. Mayor, Lowell will be my home, because I will be the superintendent of the Lowell Public Schools 24/7. I want to be part of the community, and I want to grow with this district." And she has. And she has made a home in Lowell. And there were skeptics. This woman is in charge of a school district with 1,100 students. I don't think she's gonna cut, cut the job here in Lowell. My reply to that was, "It doesn't matter how many students there is in a school district, 1,100 or 11,000. If you possess that leadership, that leadership will come forward." And that leadership has come forward. And as Mr. Conway indicated last September at the auditorium, I think the only person who was, filled that auditorium was Keith Lockhart and the Boston Pops. That Monday morning, there were 2,500 people in that auditorium, custodians, cafeteria workers, administrators, principals, teachers, everyone associated with the Lowell Public Schools. And as they entered the auditorium, there was signage indicating, "Welcome back, you're part of a team, we need you." And it was this charisma and this acceptance of everyone who worked in the Lowell Public Schools. I don't think that's ever been done before. And the leadership that Dr. Scott has shown, working with the United Teachers of Lowell and the other unions, is immense. Both know we have to roll up our sleeves, pull up the bootstraps, and make sure every child is educated properly. And Mr. Slickman just gave us a wonderful presentation of how this school district is Dr. Scott, you have received an excellent evaluation, and rightfully so. Your relationship with the community is immense. I'll just read down the various, uh, scores here. The relationships with the school committee, community relations, staff and personnel relationships, educational leadership, business and finance, personal qualities, superintendent's image, managerial ability, personnel characteristics, decision-making abilities. Excellent, excellent evaluation. And I know that the school district is in good, good hands with this committee, with this superintendent, with her staff, and I can only see great things happening in the future. So, Dr. Scott, I want to applaud you for your efforts. No one is perfect. I haven't met one person that is perfect. Not one person is perfect. But when people try to excel, to do great things, those are the people I admire. And, Dr. Scott, you have done that repeatedly, and you, not only are you an excellent advocate of education, but you represent the Lowell Public Schools immensely well throughout the entire city. I have attended many, many functions in this city. The superintendent is at those functions, and people recognize that. And you have made Lowell your home, and we have adopted you as one of our citizens. So, congratulations on this excellent, excellent evaluation, and I want to give you a round of applause for the great work you've done.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just because traditionally, we've given the superintendent an opportunity to respond. I know certainly anyone who's ever been evaluated by me before knows, the final question I always ask is for, uh, the superintendent to share with us what we can do better. Uh, any true evaluation is a dialogue, so if you'd like to instruct the committee as to the things that, uh, you think would be helpful in making you, and again, most importantly, our district successful, now would be an opportunity for you to share that with us publicly. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the, uh, committee for, um, your feedback and for your constructive criticism. Uh, we are a team, and, um, together, I think it's, um, you know, if we can work together and keep the lines of communication open. Um, obviously, communication is a two-way street, as Ben discussed here. Um, to the extent that, um, some of the issues are coming up for the first time, uh, tonight, uh, on, with regards to some of the constructive criticisms, uh, some of them I've heard before, some of them I haven't, uh, just overall, with regards to communication, if it could come up in, in a timely fashion, so if it's during the budget, um, cycle, uh, if, you know, if you have a particular concern about something, uh, we want to meet your expectations, I want to meet your expectations, um, that's what I'm here for. Uh, our cabinet, uh, wants to meet your expectations, and, uh, I, again, um, as information is presented, uh, we do, uh, provide it to the committee, and, um, to the extent that you want additional information, again, uh, please request it. Um, it is the intent for us to get you that information, and, uh, I'm not saying that, um, that always runs smoothly. It's a, a complex organization, and there's a lot of different things going on, uh, but quite clearly, um, we are committed to ensuring that you have the information that you need in a timely fashion to make the difficult decisions, uh, that you have to make. So, again, um, that would be my overall feedback, um, with regards to us as a team, and, uh, it is a privilege and an honor to work, uh, for Lowell Public Schools. We have a great staff, a wonderful school system, and, um, it's, uh, really, uh, we have, uh, wonderful families and students, and, uh, I just think that, uh, with all of us working together, uh, we can take it, uh, where it needs to go, and I thank you for that opportunity.
I will entertain a motion, um, the man and clerk recommended that we do this, entertain a motion to, um, receive and accept the evaluation of Dr. Scott by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary, and we'll take a roll call.
Just one quick question, and I don't know if the full committee has received the full, uh, it, what needs to be entered into the public document is the full evaluation. I know that in my packet, I had gotten the individual, the one where everything was kind of pulled together into an average, but I know that in the past, that we've, uh, had to include the entire document with, as part of the public record. So, I, I don't know if we have that, or, I don't have it myself, I just have mine.
Who would have that public record, uh?
Would that be, in the super, June, I believe has it?
June.
So, just so, as, again, as part of the public documentation, we need to include the entire document.
We'll accept that, that information, place it on file.
Thank you.
And, uh, so moved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. We'll also take a roll call vote to, um, indicate that the superintendent received an excellent evaluation.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mann.
One final housekeeping issue, Mr. Mayor, as we move forward. I know that there have been some questions that arose during our process, um, and that, uh, we've had some conversations with, um, Chris O'Connor, the city solicitor. I would like to make the recommendation that if this committee has made the, the decision, um, that we are changing our process, I would like the, I, I believe the contract and, and our evaluation instrument should reflect that. Uh, you know, the specific references to executive session, if that's no longer legal, I, I know that it was in the initial contract, but if it's no longer legal based on the, uh, changes in the law that, that, uh, Ms. O'Connor had, had, um, referenced, we didn't actually meet on it, but that she had referenced, uh, I believe we should take that, um, and just, I don't know if, it'll be in the minutes, but, uh, the section five, uh, letter C, that says that it will be discussed in executive session from the contract, so clearly that should be purged if it's illegal.
Okay.
Uh, and then I'd also say that we should have an updated document, uh, that this committee is gonna need to, uh, vote on what the annual performance evaluation instrument will be moving forward. The one that we've been using here was, um, approved by this committee in '08. I have a date of, uh, let's see, April 9th, '08. If the committee's made the decision to change this, then I think, again, the documentation needs to reflect that.
I will talk to the solicitor.
That would be excellent.
To amend that, and hopefully at the next meeting, it will be before you, and we can take a vote, and a roll call vote, and to accept that amendment, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Move approval.
November 18th meeting. Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, those minutes are accepted, placed on file. And I'll also entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 16th, the special meeting we had. So moved by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those minutes have been accepted and placed on file. We don't have anything on the permission to enter, I don't believe. Moving on with the agenda, memorials. Committee as a whole. Moment of silence with Doc and Chambers for Thomas H. Fleming, father of Sharon Smith, Family Resource Center Clerk, Thomas Fleming, and Ann Rudy. Moody School Custodians, Catherine Fleming, Butler School Custodian, excuse me, grandfather of Lynn Moran, Special Education Clerk, and Ronnie Smith Lowell High School Custodian. Also, Barbara Eastman, retired principal of the Laurel League School, by Regina and Fattacante, Sheila Ann Marcopolis, lifelong Lowell resident and involved with the Lowell School Committee. Can we all rise with a moment of silence with Doc and Chambers? Thank you. May they rest in peace. Unfinished business, public participation. I don't think there's any. Motion for John Leahy, request that the superintendent make sure that all meetings are posted at the schools in the appropriate place so that teachers, staff, principals, assistant principals are notified of all public meetings held by the Lowell School Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fattacante.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, the superintendent, I don't know if we already do this, but a few people have told me that they've missed meetings that they'd like to participate in. So, if we're not doing this, we'll just send out a memo.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I also think we all got the email from a parent who was very frustrated because he was unable to figure out when meetings were. And it's so simple to have that posted on our website also.
Ms. Dougherty, you want to?
Actually, I was just going to say the same thing, that in terms of our meetings, if we could have our subcommittee meetings as well as our regular meetings posted on the website, I think it really makes it a lot easier for parents and community members to know about it. Thanks.
Okay. I was just wondering if WCAP would make a public announcement. I think they're very helpful that way. You just, if you have an important subcommittee meeting coming up, just give them a buzz and put it on the airwaves. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Subcommittees. Curriculum Subcommittee Report of the Meeting of December 2nd, 2009. Connie Martin, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say with the, with all due deference to my colleagues, if it would be okay, I would prefer to wait until we have the written minutes rather than to give two reports. So, again, this meeting just happened prior to our meeting this evening, so certainly no chance to get the written minutes prepared. So, we'll defer the report until we have the written minutes to present.
So, I'm going to make a motion to table this for the, for the time being, until the written minutes are provided?
Thank you.
Move to postpone those minutes, accept and record it by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those minutes will be right forward at the next meeting.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could I ask, is it all right to ask a question that, that I had on the meeting?
Yes.
I just had one quick thing.
Yes, John.
Okay. I just had a question through you to the superintendent about, a couple of people had asked me about that Quebec field trip that the high school takes. And I know that, you know, amongst the committee, we've had discussion on the days and timeline and purpose of it. But it came to my attention, I know we voted on the 2/11 trip, but I didn't see the 2/10 trip, and I didn't know if you had any information on that. I mean, someone told me that, they were told that they were just going to forget about it this year, and I thought, you know, that that was a shame. It's not our intent to squash these field trips. So, if, I don't know if you want to, if you know anything about it now, if you want to guess a report, but.
Sure.
I would hope that they didn't postpone their trip this year because they would think we didn't want them to go or something, so.
Right. Me too. As you know, your new travel policy has nine different components to the policy. One of the components is to have a written report on the educational value around what the students will learn. And part of that request for that trip was that they would, the students would write what they learned when they got back. So, I want a point of clarification on, I'm thinking the policy, my interpretation of it, I'm thinking the policy wants the report up front, not when the children come back on what they're going to, to, to learn. So, that was the point of clarification. When I asked for the report tonight, because it was on this agenda, because I wanted to bring it forward to discuss it, to clarify, I was told actually that at this time, they weren't going. And I believe, Ms. Dougherty says it was because of a passport issue, or, I don't know if you have other details.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Ms. Dougherty?
I will follow up tomorrow with them.
Just what I heard about that field trip, they didn't have all the, all the information in place that met our.
Criteria.
Policy criteria. And it was given back to them, you're missing some pieces of information. Given the timeframe, because they leave in February and they go out of the country, our next school committee meeting? They weren't, which would have been tonight, they didn't feel that was enough time, enough notification for parents to get your passport, so they decided not to do the trip. I mean, I heard that from the teacher who organizes the trip. That it was a timing issue in terms of, I guess, submitting it, when they submitted it, and I don't know if it went to your office or stopped at the high school level.
The whole process.
But when they submitted it, they didn't have all the information they needed to meet our policy.
So, I sent it back.
So, it was sent back to get this information, and then they made the determination, and now it was getting too close to the, it's very, it takes some time to get a passport nowadays, and you go into Canada, you need a passport. So, the teacher told me herself that she decided it wasn't enough time. So, that's why the trip was canceled. I think it was like a planning communication thing.
I mean, they've, they've done this year and year up, so why? I mean, our policies are there to, you know, not stop these things, but.
John, you see where you're little question, turn in.
Well, it's just disappointing. I mean, they do this trip over and over, I don't understand why they couldn't have it in place, you know, the information, whatever.
Connie, you want to weigh in on this?
Thank you very much. No, I just wanted to, you know, again, just as a point of clarification, I know that when we had developed the criteria, these nine points that have been referenced, one of the, one of the kind of things that presupposed those nine points, in my understanding of our conversations, were that as the teachers or, you know, the groups that were putting together these trips, our concern was in missed time, missed school time. And that what we were really looking for from our educators was to give us a justification as to why this, why this trip was substantial enough and what the reasoning was, the rationale to, to make it, have it make sense that they'd miss a school day for it. Part of that was certainly those nine points of, you know, tying things to the curriculum and that whole process, which I know we've seen with a number of our requests, which I have found extremely helpful in better understanding what our, our students are doing. But I do think that it is this whole concept of presupposing that there needed to be a reason that justified why we'd add an extra day. You know, I don't know if this teacher has this in mind, and if it's too late, I can certainly understand that, you know, she didn't, she decided to focus on the next year's trip. But again, you know, this committee, I, I hope has been clear that we, you know, want to give our students every opportunity, and all we're asking is that we get the kind of information from our, our educators that tells us what makes this trip so special, why a day out of school is warranted, and then how it ties to curriculum. And I think that those are all things that our teachers, I, I hope are comfortable with, and that I think it's what allows, me as a school community member, I suspect my colleagues as well, to feel comfortable with as well as we approve these, these, these trips. And we want our students to get the best and the most out of them. Thank you.
Jackie?
I just want to add one more piece of information that came across in my conversation with the teacher. One of the other changes we made with this policy, which I think most of everyone would agree was a, a good way to go, was that we wanted to approve field trips before money was collected from parents. So, that also became another factor in the time crunch, because we had Thanksgiving, then we have the Christmas break.
Correct.
And so, you've got to get money from parents, all after we take a vote. And you also have to get parents getting the information together to apply for a passport. It just all came down to not enough time. And I'm hoping, as has been said by my colleagues before, that this is, this new policy doesn't discourage field trips. That's not our intention. But that, that kind of planning, now this trip happened every year, but prior to this year is the first time they've had to meet all these different criteria. Often, we would get field trip requests after the money had been collected. That was one of the problems we found with it, is that we don't want to be in a position of approving something because the money, parents have already contributed deposits that are non-refundable, you know, et cetera. So, that was also a key factor in the timing. And, and again, I would hope that we could convey that message to the, the staff at the high school who coordinates this trip, you know, that we still want our kids to go on field trips. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on with the agenda. Reports of the superintendent, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to bring to our school community's attention that the Family Resource Center hours of operation have changed. Previously, the Parent Information Center operated daily from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. with, with extended hours on Thursday evening from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Last year, when the Parent Information Center was restructured into the Family Resource Center, we expanded the operating hours from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. daily and continued the Thursday evening hours from 5:00 to 7:00. In consultation with the Family Resource Center Coordinator, John Dakota, we have found that few people come to register on Thursday evenings between the hours of 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. To better accommodate our families and to allow for a more efficient, flexible staffing model on Thursday evenings, we will be changing the hours of operation on Thursdays from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This will eliminate the need to close the center for one hour, yet the current 10 hours of operation will be maintained. During the two weeks of kindergarten registration in March and the peak operating weeks from August the 15th through August the 31st, the center will expand hours again on Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to, again, 7:00 p.m. This extra hour of operation will afford families greater access to the center during the highest registration periods. We will continue to monitor, monitor the registration trends and bring forth recommendations accordingly. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
I appreciate the, the review on this. I guess the thing I'm looking, and I appreciate looking at during peak hours and making different changes. I, I think one of the things we may want to do next, in the beginning of the year, is come up to do a survey for the folks that we actually are, are customers. What would be beneficial times for them? I think that's a good idea. I think going forward, these creative ideas that meet the customers' needs are good. So, I appreciate the, the thought that went into it, and I look forward to seeing how this will work in, in March when we do this with the kindergarten registration. Thank you.
Let us take a roll call vote on this, because we're changing the times and so forth, just to, so move approval by Mr. Conway.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call, please.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
The next item, Madam Superintendent?
The next report in front of you is, last spring 2009, we had a special education parent survey. And the results for us, 97 school districts performed this particular survey. Surveys were sent to 2,126 of our parents of Lowell Public School students in grades K through 12, of which 12.8% were returned. Of the Lowell survey, 77% of parents reported the schools facilitate their involvement. The survey consisted of 25 items, of which Lowell was at or above the state percent for parents, for parental agreement in '23. The agreement percentage for Lowell ranged from 88% to 37%, while the agreement percentage for the state ranged from 88 to 24. Very impressive scores. The three most important survey statements identified as being most critical to establishing good parent relationships were, one, teachers are available to meet with, to meet with staff. In Lowell, 88%, and at the state level, it was also 88%. My child's teacher, teachers give me enough time and opportunity to discuss my child's needs and progress. Lowell Public Schools, 84%. The state was also 84%. Teachers and administrators encouraged me to participate in the decision-making process. Lowell Public Schools, 81%, where the state was 78%. The two items where the state exceeded Lowell in the percentage of parent agreement were, the school has a person on staff who's available to answer parents' questions. Lowell Public, 84%, and the state was 85%. The school offers parents a variety of ways to communicate with teachers. Lowell Public Schools, 71%, and the state was 74%. In viewing the survey results, areas to focus improved activities on where we have the greatest impact are, one, to increase the survey return rate, which will provide greater representation and more confidence in the survey results. And two, develop a plan to provide parents with greater information on community-based organizations and supports for families. I've included the details of this particular survey. And as well, I'd like to thank Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Anne Murphy, for her work on this report.
Regina?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to commend Assistant Superintendent Murphy for this, this role of special ed director has now been thrust upon her. My concern with the survey is the two places where we were not rated as high, Your Honor, dealt with communication. And it certainly, you know, we just had a memorial tonight for Sheila Marcopolis, and I think you might remember her, Your Honor. She had a daughter who had, had special needs. And Sheila was dogged in her attempts to get everything she could for her child. So, it concerns me that the, the two places where we, and not only for her child, but Sheila Marcopolis became a special education advocate for people who did not know how to work the system. She was a decent, honorable woman who came and sat at meetings. I can't even watch them on TV as repeats. I don't know how she sat through them all, but she did. And, and then she would communicate back to other special ed parents. And I know that Assistant Superintendent Murphy remembers Mrs. Marcopolis. So, it concerns me that the two places where we scored lower was in our ability to communicate with our special ed parents. And I, and I'm not sure how we fix that. You know, we have enormous budget cuts in front of us, and, and that's going to get more difficult to communicate. And I think one of the ways that we, that we, again, fix the problem is that we use our school internet site. I mean, we, we need to figure out a way for special ed parents to ask questions. And, and we have to come up with a solution. I mean, it's especially important for people who, who have children who have special needs to be able to get answers. So, I don't know how we figure that out, but we, we need to, it's going to be the responsibility of the administration to figure out how we are more responsive to people.
Okay. Mr. Leary, then Ms. Martin.
Ms. Fattacante hit it right on the head, and I think not only for special ed or for everything, the internet, we're not dealing, dealing with it in the most effective way that we have, that we, that we could be. So, I think this needs to be a top priority for the beginning part of next year. I mean, our teachers should be interfaced with students on email, or whatever that particular X2 component is actually called. That's essential. A quick question through the superintendent to the Assistant Superintendent Murphy. I guess, do we have our teams all in place in the schools, the ETCs, the psychologists? Are they aligned? Are they actually in the buildings now? I think that's part of the communication piece, that they, I know the goal was to get them in the buildings so they're actually, actually part of that culture. Has that actually been achieved?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. They're all in the buildings.
So, I think that's a good start, I think, in terms of the communication. But I think the other area we're going to have to address at the beginning of the year, and I think you, this is something you probably have already talked about internally, is the Director of Special Ed position, that we don't, that, that Assistant Superintendent is assuming, either we find some other mechanism of addressing that position, in other words, hiring another individual to fill that position, or hiring someone else for the underposition, for make it three instead of two. Some type of dynamic has to change, because this, if we don't handle it properly initially, communication's only the tip of the iceberg, I think, then we're going to, it's going to cost us a lot more money down the road. So, I think this is something that's got to become a priority. I agree with Ms. Fattacante, the internet is significant, and we need to. I agree with Ms. Fattacante, the internet is significant, and we need to jump on this ASAP as a top priority, because it will solve some of the communication problems. But I fear that that's only part, the tip of the iceberg. I think that we, that position, when we made a decision to calculate, like, not fund it because of retirement, is something that may or may not, you know, prove to be a, a negative impact to the system. So either we measure it right now and tell us that we need to fund it, and we'll have to find a way to fund it, or make another alternative quickly. Thank you.
Connie?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just in looking at the information, so looking at spring two thousand and nine, that was late, I'm assuming like April, May, in that timeframe. Just another thing I think we really should be aware of, looking at the kind of recommendations moving forward about areas to focus on, increasing survey return rate, and letting parents, giving parents better information about community-based organizations, you know, I think those are both good, good things to look at. But I, I would prefer, as we're kind of setting priorities, if we looked at the items that were, even by, by ESE standards, determined to be the most important, survey statements, as I'm looking at their report to us in this backup materials, the availability of, of teachers to, to actually talk with parents, the availability of teachers to give enough time and opportunity to the child, to each special education child that's in our, in our care. Then the third one I see here is having teachers and administrators encouraging parents to participate in the decision-making process. For myself, and I don't know if the Special Ed Subcommittee or whatnot would want to meet on this, those are far more important priorities than increasing the number of people who respond to a survey, or talking about a flyer that may go out. So if we could, just as we move forward, maybe focus on those, and be able to look at, look at that information, again, in Subcommittee, if that's deemed to be appropriate by the Chair.
Move to accept the communication, placed on file by Dave Conway, seconded by Jackie Dougherty. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, that's been accepted and placed on file. And the last report, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Genocide Education Project, I wanted to share with you the exciting news that Dr. Palache, Specialist for Community Outreach and Support of English Language Learners and Families, has been a part of. Dr. Che has invited to participate in the Documentation Center for Cambodia's Genocide Education Project in collaboration with an international team of twenty-four educators and scholars. Dr. Che has, and her colleagues, Christopher Dearing, were charged with developing a grade nine through twelve national curriculum on genocide education for students of Cambodia. With the financial backing for the project provided by the United States, Belgium, Canada, Denmark, Norway, and Sweden, the textbook History of Democratic Cambodia, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right, from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-nine was produced. This national curriculum will document and integrate the history of the mass atrocities suffered during the four-year period. The Khmer Rouge regime into all Cambodian public schools, with a goal of promoting education, peace, and reconciliation in Cambodia. She willingly has shared her expertise and talents for this worthwhile project. Her significant contribution to writing, editing, translating the text was acknowledged with great appreciation by Yoc Chong, the Director of the Documentation Center of Cambodia. Congratulations.
Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Fattacante?
Since Dr. Che has become a member of the Lowell School System, she has done amazing things for us. She has brought together the Parent Information Center, she has reached out to Southeast Asian families to bring them into the fold, so to speak. She has been an amazing resource for us. And now, what's even more remarkable is that she's going to be an amazing resource for, for her own people, in helping them understand the genocide that they went through as a country. It's amazing that, I mean, we teach about the Civil War here in the United States. It's amazing that a country does not teach about its own Civil War. And maybe because it just happened not too long ago, but it's, it's just, it's incredible that this woman is actually going to be able to bring about a recognition of the history of her own country, and help people across the world understand it. And, and she, let's understand something, she's an employee of the Lowell School System. That is quite remarkable.
Anyone else like to?
[inaudible]
Move to accept the communication, placed on file by Connie Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That has been accepted and placed on file. On the next convention or conference request?
Take the, in total, Your Honor?
Yeah. Move for pool, I mean, Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Conway. Let us take a roll call vote on that, because there's a lot of dollar signs I see through that, that whole thing. Roll call, Madam Fu.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Is there anything else to discuss before we adjourn? Mr. Leahy? Mr. Leahy? Go ahead. Do you want to go first? All right. Go ahead.
These are communications to update on.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you, this'll be quick.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I
You have a packet of information that was distributed. Basically, it's just to inform my colleagues of the eleven resolutions that were passed by the Mass Association of School Committee delegates. I believe that was two weeks ago. And also, the front page talks about an urban division meeting that will be held on December twelfth, Saturday, from ten A.M. to one P.M. in Marlborough, to have urban school committee members with legislators and leadership, the Mass Association of School Committees, discuss the legislation that's pending before the House of Representatives. It is expect, expected that they will be voting on that the first week they reconvene in January. And it is said this legislation is, we have not seen this kind of far-reaching decisions impacting public schools since the First Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three. So I would hope my colleagues would be able to attend that meeting on the twelfth. Thank you.
Move to accept that communication by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor, signify by saying aye, that has been accepted and placed on file. Just a little bit of information for you. I visited Kelvin Savan-McSay at his home, that's the twelve-year-old student at the Star Closeup Middle School, who was seriously injured by a motorist at the VFW Highway and Mammoth Road. And Kelvin's mother and father wanted to express to everyone, they wanted to say thank you for the cards, the prayers, and the caring that everyone's concerned. And Kelvin is, has a long way to come back, but he's, he's gonna be okay. And just a great, great kid. So I just want to convey that with you. And on Sunday, December thirteenth, at the Lowell Senior Center, the mayor will be having a Christmas celebration with the Lowell School Committee, the Lowell City Council, and sponsored by the Lowell Senior Center, Comcast, the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce. And there'll be a special guest there, Santa Claus will come in and wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, to the children and, and to the adults. Ralph Fennaro and Donna Wallett will be entertaining. The Lowell High School Alumni, Alumni Chorus, the Lowell High School Spindle Show Choir, they're absolutely magnificent. Mayor Caulfield and Allison Burns will also be there, offering some entertainment, will have a nice light lunch, and it'll be a way to give everyone a chance to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And on September, on December twentieth, at St. Joseph's Shrine, the Songs of Christmas, featuring Lowell's own Spindle City Singers, Norman Ayotte, director. And if you ever attended one of those concerts, you know what I'm talking about. If you haven't attended, please do so. It's remarkable, and this chorus could go on Broadway, Boston, San Francisco, they are absolutely professional, and they bring a special, special meaning to every song they sing. With that said, yes, Ms. Martin? Go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up. At a recent meeting before, I believe it was before our last school committee meeting, we had had a discussion regarding the status of our contract negotiations, and I was wondering if it would be possible to, through the superintendent, to schedule a time for us to, hopefully before the end of the year, reconvene. We talked about wanting to bring in some of the unions with unresolved issues, to try and perhaps settle this as soon as possible. It would be great if we might be able to make that happen before the end of the calendar year. I haven't heard anything about scheduling, so I don't know if, if that's already been underway, but if we could take care of that, to try and get that wrapped up this calendar year, I think that would be helpful.
Now, next, the next meeting on the sixteenth will be our last meeting for the year. And I, I don't know where the two years went, but they just flew right by. John, did you have something to say?
Yes, thank you. I just was wondering if, through you, the superintendent, can you give us an update what's happening with the high school, the headmaster position, or do you want to, can you get us some information on that?
Yes, I can, and I do believe I did request, and it went out, the updated timeline with regard, in the last packet of the change in the timeline, because we still didn't have Mr. Somaris's documentation of his retirement. However, Mr. Somaris has been very cooperative, and we do continue along with our timeline as that information in your packet indicated. We met with all the focus groups. All the focus groups had met, come up with a job description, a three-page, that was also in your packet, and we do expect to proceed within the week.
Okay, thank you. And to what, what Ms. Martin said, it would be great if we can settle these contracts and get them in order before the year ends, so that'd be a great priority, especially the one with the, the new glue contract. I'd like to try to get that done by the end of the year, if we could, so.
Madam Superintendent, I'll
Could I just ask a question of Assistant Superintendent Lang, if you have any update on that particular negotiation, because I know you said anything on that?
No, I think the, the best thing to do would be to just poll the committee tomorrow morning for a date over the next two weeks, and to advertise a date.
Thank you.
But really, nothing to say publicly at this point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. My recollection is that because Mr. Somaris had not submitted anything to us, this committee had not approved anything. So it would be my hope that nothing happens without committee approval. No ads in the paper, no final job description, no setup of the task force, because this committee must approve the process. And we have not done that. So I would expect that it, we do that at the next meeting. Madam Superintendent, would that be possible? We have not approved, we have not seen a final job description, we have not seen final makeup of the task force, because we were not able to vote on this at the last, at our, at our last discussion, because there had been no letter from Mr. Somaris. So I would expect that, two things. One, nothing happens without the committee approval. And, and so, so, so nothing can be transmitted to personnel, nothing can be agreed upon until this committee has a letter, and then the superintendent brings forward to this committee, the, again, the process, so that we can look at it and vote upon it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Louie?
Just to follow, just to, to Madam Superintendent, for Mr. Leahy said a question, I guess, and I must have missed what you said, it's something like, this will be resolved this week? He just said something like, we'll follow up. I mean, what did you mean, I mean, directly, what did you mean by that?
That we have been in a conversation with Mr. Somaris, and that I will have further information within the week.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Further information, meaning whether we're going, I mean, that's what I'm really getting at, further information?
From Mr. Somaris. However, our timeline is still, we will still be proceeding.
Okay. I think that's important, when we make a, when we start to proceed in the month of December, we have one meeting left, and a lot of this stuff going forward, posting positions, what have you, that's really, you know, what we'll be looking at, be looking at on the sixteenth, I guess, more than anything.
So we should be looking for that to be on the agenda, or have a communication in our packet for the next meeting?
Yes, Your Honor.
That's correct.
Any other things to discuss? Thank you for a great meeting. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Conway, seconded by Connie Martin. Thank you.
[music]